We all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome everyone to the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session on August 12, 2025, and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of potential litigation related to zoning, code enforcement, pensions, matters of real estate related to parks, personnel matters, and board training. Want to give some updates. The final concert of the summer series is, has been rescheduled at a new time for Wednesday, August 27, at Pen Ambler Park. It's featuring Mike Greer and Company. The music will start at 6:00 PM. There will be food, drinks, and a face painter available at 5:30. Lower Gwinnett Fall Fest is Saturday, September 13. It's going to be noon at 6:00 PM on Houston Road by the Wissickin High School. Please share with all your friends, neighbors, and family, and please come out. Now I'm going to turn it over to our chief. There's going to be a demonstration on a new virtual reality taser.
They're going to give like a brief five-minute presentation on one of the capital projects we got this year. Most of us are probably familiar with an old-fashioned taser that shoots two probes out. It's one and done. It's pretty simple. This is a little different. So we, five minutes. We are having some technical.
I volunteer Mr. Turski for tasing.
Unless there's any other takers. So, good evening, everybody. My name again is Chris Swenson. This is Jamie Sharkey. We're with the Lower Gwinnett Police Department. So with the board's support, our police department has made some upgrades to some of the equipment that we have that I would like to share with you tonight, one of which is the taser. Our old taser looked like this. It was the X26P model. One of the limitations to this taser is it has one-shot per cartridge. The probes come out, two probes come out, and you need an ideal hit with both probes in order for it to be effective. The effective rate can be lower than 50% on something like this. Our new taser, the Taser 10, we waited a couple models until the advancements were worth the investment, and in this case, it really was. With this taser, we have 10 individual shots with taser probes. Our range goes from 25 feet with the older model up to 45 feet. That distance can, can save lives for sure, give us a lot more time to react. Also with the 10 shots, we have that many more opportunities to connect these probes in order for it to, to be effective. Along with this device comes the advancements of technology of the recent years in the VR headset. This paired with the VR headset and the Axon system, they integrate so well to where there's multiple virtual reality-based training simulations. So previously with the old taser there, you might shoot two cartridges, four cartridges a year at a stationary target. Now with this synced up in virtual reality, no longer are we spending $40 per cartridge when we're training. We're shooting 500 times in virtual reality to really get, you know, those added reps in. Also, we have moving targets. We have reality-based training scenarios in this virtual reality where they're dispatching us to calls, and they're always adding to it. So I'm going to try and demonstrate some of that for you to hear today. Unfortunately, we're, we're dealing with some Wi-Fi connectivity issues, so we're going to do our best. You connected here, Jamie? Okay, so hit up, begin.
Unfortunately, we're losing connection. But what allows me to do is as a trainer, I can take any one of our officers, and I can guide them through a number of these virtual reality-based exercises. And I can, I can walk them through it. I can tell them where to look and, and guide them through whatever the exercise is. What it also allows us to do is another advancement that we've had, also upgrading is our firearms. So we're switching to firearms with red dots. Also, we're going to a 9mm round to improve accuracy, and the red dot will, will also enhance that. The red dot has a little bit of a learning curve, person, typical firing sight, if anybody's familiar with firearms. What this does, this also allows us to take, look here on my head, sort of, it's another exact model of the firearm we're going to, and compare it with this virtual reality as well. Again, we're not spending money on rounds and range, and we're getting more reality-based training where we can switch from taser to firearm. But that initial learning curve, we can save a lot of money and a lot of time with the officers training them up on how to capture that red dot, how to become proficient with our new firearms. So the integration of all this, I think, is really an advancement in police work. The amount of training hours we can get each officer in on a shift, whereas if we have a half an hour of downtime, I can get an officer to put on the headset, and I can guide them through some exercises, and we can integrate that into our daily shifts versus spending, you know, an additional training day down the road to get, to get that, that same effect on this. So, does anybody have any, any questions about it? On any of this, I apologize for the connectivity issues. Hopefully, the next time I'll be able to get a good demonstration. Thank you for your question. Anything else you want to add? I will give, I will end with one little demonstration for you here. I can at least give you something. But can you go forward?
I don't know why everybody's.
Mr. Turski, just that quick.
Jimmy, what Jimmy was saying earlier, he would love to be here. He mentioned it to me early.
You're a public servant.
So, to serve our citizens at all, kindness to the trainee car. Oh, not giving anybody. But the old taser, if I can see that as well, our old taser, its limitations were the one-shot, and we have a laser for our subject here. There's no flashlight, and there's no warning. The new taser. We get a flashlight, and help them make, we have, we still have our laser pointer, but I can also initiate not only my verbal warning to the subject, but I can also hit up on my tab here, and instead of doing a spark test with the prior taser, give the visual sound, a strobe light in this area of the subject, and just that alone has been proven to get a subject to give up. Yes?
Have there been any other municipalities with this new tool, and how do you people do that?
So, upper west, please.
You gotta come on up. If you're going to ask a question, you have to come up and state your name. I'm sorry. You gotta come up so you can be, nobody can hear you on.
We, we have a question here.
It should be on.
Now it is. Kathy 411 Brookside. My question was, are, is there another municipality police station using this equipment, this new, these new tools, and have you received any feedback?
So yes, there are many municipalities around the country, police departments around the country that have implemented this before us. They were the test subjects. Now that it's proven, we've, we've decided to invest and implement it ourselves. But, but just locally, I've gotten some personal feedback from officers I know just over the border in Upper Gwinnett that, that have had success. They haven't even had necessarily to deploy it, but just that warning that you saw there in an instance that they described was enough. So yes, I, I know of at least one effective.
Officer Swenson. Just, just to clarify, so will all officers, all patrol officers have this? A select few? How many did we get with our, I know that we budgeted for this in part of our capital.
So we, we rotate them throughout the shifts, but yes, every officer on the street will be using this hopefully by the end of the year. There is a rollout period where they have, officers have to be trained up and qualified on this before we're putting it out on the street. We have to mod, we're modifying our policy to accommodate for these things. But once that's all done, yes, we have enough to supply every officer that's on the street in Lower Gwinnett, this new tool.
And is it the same power level as the older models?
So it, it, the effect, the power, it's, it's hard to describe a power level, but it's the same effectiveness to create the NMI neuromuscular incapacitation to stop a subject. What, again, what this allows you is greater accuracy, more chances of that lockup to get the subject to essentially give up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just.
It, it's not making anybody suffer anymore. It's not making, it wasn't an increase in anything like that. It's more so just a different utilization of the tool to make it more effective.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to open it up to public comments, citizen comments, concerns, or questions for items that are not on the agenda. Being none, we'll move on. First up, the administrative committee made a recommendation to the board as it relates to a vacancy for an alternate on our zoning hearing board. Our recommendation was to appoint David Dratch as an alternate to the zoning hearing board. I believe Mr. Dratch is here with us tonight. We went over his qualifications and believe that he would be an exemplary volunteer to our zoning hearing board. Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Now I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Dratch as an alternate to the zoning hearing board. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. When occasion, congratulate Mr. Dratch, and thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming out. You don't have to stay if you don't want to. Next up is a discussion about Ambler Yards and a proposed development and ordinance amendment. I believe Christian Pianzio is representing Ambler Yards.
I am. Good evening. Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Rubin, Mullen, Maxwell, and Lupin. I am here representing the owners of Ambler Yards. I have a team of people here with me, the owners, of course. Matt Siegel and Mark Pollicarfer are here. Tim Woodrow, our civil engineers here. The architect that did the residential building is Steve Klein from Reagan Cross and Klein over there on the end. And the architect that did the self-storage building is Sean Reebuck from SAA Architects. He's here in the front. I did send a PowerPoint over to Jamie, but it looks like you lost everything.
Looks like we just, what happened? Oh, did the zoom go down?
We brought boards just in case.
Did the police do that?
Did they taser them over there?
Following a taser demonstration is a little nerve-wracking to say. Good thing you guys don't have them on the taser.
Is it just the cord? Maybe they just made it.
My computer is off too, though.
I mean, if they were on, it's kind of like public.
Thank you, guys, for holding on. We're back. Apologize for the technical difficulties. Turn back over to Mr. Pianzio.
Yeah.
Oh, the PowerPoint is what tripped us up.
Fucking the PowerPoint.
Let's see if that'll happen.
That happens again. I think we're going to forego the PowerPoint.
I'm sure.
The laptop just.
Oh, the laptop did?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right, good to go. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so I think everyone knows what Ambler Yards is. Matt and Mark got control of Ambler Yards, which is the, what we call the mixed-use. Track one is identified on the plans. They also acquired this corner. It's a residential corner. There's four buildings and two garages on this corner. They acquired this property 10 years ago, and as you know, they've redeveloped it, put millions and millions of dollars into the property to revitalize it. We have businesses in there, you know, food. We have a brewery, and it's been a success. I think you have a 95% occupancy rate, 100%, 100% occupancy rate. So huge success. They have had conversations in 2019. So the idea was to do a live-work-play in this property, and the live part has always been, oh, these don't work on your screens, right? Okay, back to the screen. So this upper right-hand corner is the residential component of Ambler Yards. And so in 2019, they started conversations with the community, with the neighbors, to talk about an apartment building for this, to add the live part to the live-work-play. They had about three meetings with the residents. They had a different architect at that time, worked with them, listened to their feedback, and designed some plans. The pandemic happened, other things happened that dropped off. We are here tonight to talk to you about two proposals. Well, it's one ordinance that is in front of you. We submitted an application, but it accomplishes two things. One is the ability to build apartments on that corner, and the second is to resolve, there's litigation pending currently for this portion of the property here. This is where the school buses were located and used to be parked. When the conversations happened about the apartments, a lot of the feedback was traffic, traffic, traffic. So instead of building another industrial-type user or any of the uses permitted in the mixed-use section of the F District, they propose a self-storage facility, which is probably the lowest generator of traffic. So they've had three meetings over the last year with the neighbors to come up with a design that they think is accomplishing the feedback that they have received, and that is what we're going to show you tonight. So the next screen shows the layout as we propose on the property. The orientation of the apartment building, which is 43 units, is inward, and you'll see more design about that. And then the proposed storage facility is where the school buses were. There's also a native meadow that is proposed here, and we put in for a grant for a pollinator garden. If that grant doesn't happen, this meadow will get larger, but we've included a proposed trail to go through here that's open to the public, and that would be part of a land development application if we are successful. I'm going to start with the storage facility, and that is the next slide. So this isn't just a metal box. As you know, storage facilities can look like anything. This is tucked in. You'll see, we had, we did cross-sections to show you that the neighbors that are behind this storage facility will look across the top of it. But from the inside, they've added architectural features to make it aesthetically pleasing. They do have employees and business owners in the park. They care about how this park looks and functions. So we've had the help of Sean, who listened to their feedback, and added architectural elements. He's here if you want to talk about any of that. Next slide, please. So we did these view sheds from the back of the houses that are along the street behind the storage facility. So these are the vantage points that were selected. The next slide, please, Jamie, will show you that from each of these vantage points, the view shed goes through the trees, and you can see how the grade drops off. This is the building. So the view from here goes across the top. This is the building on this view shed, and this is the building on this view shed. We submitted all of these in your packet, so if you want to see them closer, you can see that. I found it difficult to look on my screen at them, and maybe on this, it's a little more difficult, too. Next slide, please. So these are some details. It's a view of the front. The view of the back really won't be seen. It's built into the, the back of the hillside there, the side elevations. There's some building material samples at the bottom. And the next few slides show the components of the interior. This is an 84,000 square foot facility. It has three stories. It is self-storage. It's climate-controlled. There is access along the front. They foresee contractors using that. Otherwise, if you want to store inside, you use dollies. There's no cars that drive into these facilities. You would go in, get a dolly or a bin, and move your stuff in and out of the facility. Next slide, please. So much work had been done on the facade of the proposed apartment building. This is the view at the corner of Spring Garden and Francis. You can see that the third floor is tucked into the roof line. That roof line is stepped back to minimize the, the massing of the building and the size of it. The architectural features are, I, I would say, beautiful. You know, they've added different architectural elements so that it would be pleasing to the eye. There is no access for pedestrians along the outside of this building on either of these street frontages. There are only emergency egress doors on this side. There's no balconies. There is no rooftop access or any rooftop activity. Next slide, please. So this is the view from Spring Garden. Next slide, please. So this is the interior. This faces the Ambler Yards property. You can see this is where the car, cars are parked. We do have parking here for the apartments. There's also a cross-easement proposed with Ambler Yards for any overflow. Ambler, Ambler Yards has more than enough parking on their property. This contains nine two-bedroom apartments, 18 one-bedroom apartments, and 16 one-bedroom plus den. The interior, oh, there you go. That's fine. There's the entrance in the center there. You can see that in the middle of the building. And the next slides just show the details of they have congregation spaces and areas for general meeting places for the residents of the facility, and everything goes to the inside of the property. So the vision is that the people who live here would work at Ambler Yards. If not, the hope is that there is a shuttle that Ambler Yards has that constantly runs to the train station in Ambler. Anybody actually can use that shuttle. That can bring people back and forth to the train station should they wish to use it. So that's available to these residents as well. So that is the three floors. So the ordinance that was part of our application achieves this. All the criteria that would achieve what you see on the plan that was the second slide, if you could go back to that, Jamie, is part and parcel of that ordinance. So the experts are here to answer your questions. That's a summary of what we're proposing.
I have some questions.
I bet you do.
How many units in the storage facility? Yeah.
I'm going to test my skills here. What's up?
Yeah.
I hope they are, too. What's that?
Seems like something that maybe they should.
That sounds about right. I'm seeing two.
I can't. Do you have another question in the meantime while? Can you read this?
I have a question on this end about the apartment complex. Are you going to be providing charging stations for the folks that have EVs?
Matt, you want it? Is there, are there two?
Oh, yeah, it is.
We currently have two on the property that service, they, they're open to the general public as well as our tenants, but we certainly could add more to, dedicated to the apartment building as well. But I mean, right now, the two we have really don't get used. We have maybe, I would say, less than 10 chargings a month.
Yeah. Are they Tesla or another brand?
They are not Tesla. They're, they have the universal plug on them.
Yeah.
So somebody, somebody who drives a Tesla would have, would have a, a conversion plug that they could use it for.
Yeah. Not, not all chargers are created equal. I, I think it would be to everyone's benefit to add more than two. Maybe people aren't using them right now, but if they're available, they, they'll be used in the future.
Sure. Okay.
Sean Reebuck, SAA Architects. Yes, 609, and they all vary between, all the interior units vary between 25 square feet per unit up to 300 square feet per unit.
So 609 total units over three floors?
Correct.
Okay. And can you explain the security for the building?
Security for the building, in, in general, there will be security cameras. We typically, you will see security cameras on a closed-circuit television loop. Most typically, we will use like a sliding, sliding door for entry into the loading area. Those are keypad access only after, for after-hours in general during the kind of general business hours at the In general, during the kind of general business hours that the offices open, all of those will be unlocked because there'll be office presence there to kind of monitor the circumstance. So.
So unmanned after hours. So there's a period of time where it's unmanned?
Correct.
Okay. And can you tell us, without getting into too many details, that'll be over my head, the fire suppression system?
So typically, they are on a, I believe, a dry, usually I see them on a dry sprinkler, dry sprinkler system with a stand pipe. Obviously, that would be in coordination with the fire marshal and whatever the fire marshal requirements would be. We will normally see a Knox box that will be located in coordination with them as well as typically a fire alarm panel.
And will the, will there be anything prohibited from being stored there? So I assume there's going to be some kind of contractual obligation, contract between the facility and the renter?
So that would be also at the discretion of the, of the management company, the storage management company. But in general, as an occupancy, they are an S1 occupancy. So there is no hazardous materials that are being stored there. Any vehicles that are being stored there for long-term use are, have a maximum like fuel that is available, allowed to be within the vehicle. They're very, very high limited, very limited on the amount of combustible materials or any kind of hazardous materials are able to be stored within the, within the facility itself. So.
So when you say limited, how will we know? Has there been a contractor, has there been a management company decided? Or you guys just building it and sort of that?
We've interviewed two of the public REITs, Extra Space and Keep Smart. So our expectation would be it would be a branded self-storage facility that we would, we would actually not operate the day-to-day. It would be operated by somebody like that. So there would be a management contract in place. So they'd be responsible for, you know, putting it on their website and getting the prospective tenants in there. So, you know, it would be run by, you know, extremely professional, national company.
I have two questions, I think, for our staff. I don't mean to monopolize, but is this the only F District designation in the town? And does the F District now identify what can be stored there? I mean, I know you guys have some chemical companies that store some pretty hazardous materials and do so professionally. And we've talked about that a few meetings back. Does our ordinance say anything about what can be stored there? Okay.
Our current ordinance does not provide any criteria for self-storage. It just has, under the permitted uses, it has storage in warehouse. But it doesn't, it doesn't specify what.
So do we have the flexibility to make those specific specifications within the ordinance? Or is that outside the scope of the ordinance, Mr. Solis?
In the context of a rezoning, you have a lot of flexibility.
Can we make the, here's my concern. I don't want to sort of ask obscure questions. You have some folks on campus that store some, like I said, hazardous material in a very professional way. If we don't have the same, it sounds like whoever's going to run the facility is going to decide what can be stored in there. They're not going to have the same capability for suppressing fire or they're going to manage their chemicals in such a way inside the storage facility. So I'm concerned about that. And if we allow it in one part of Zone F, District F, then we would, do we, would we have to allow it in the entirety of it? Or can we say, storage facilities, you can only do, you can only store this?
Because it's a unique use.
Because it would be a criteria under the conditional use.
Okay.
Are there like these national REITs that operate these storage facilities? I assume they have sort of, maybe this isn't a correct assumption, but do they have sort of standard contracts and standard restrictions? So maybe that's something that we can work with. You know, we can look at what those restrictions would be and make sure they would comply with Mr. Torsky's concerns.
They don't let fires in.
Sure they don't.
Right.
And also, you know, the code that the building is certified for, for, you know, by the architectural standards, it's going to be stored in the building. So we can provide them.
Maybe there's a way to incorporate that somehow into the definition of storage facility, how we're approving it.
Yeah, and I mean, as, as the owners, we, we would be fine, you know, coming up with some reasonable standard of what can and can't be stored in there because we don't want things.
I'm sure you don't want it either, right? I just want to make sure that for you guys, for the neighbors, we just closed the loop so there's not any issue with what might happen, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly, you know, reach out to Keep Smart and Extra Space and anybody else we're talking to and ask, you know, how they handle that in their contract? Or practically speaking, how do they handle it? And, you know, for a next, for a follow-up meeting, we could have some more information for you.
Thank you.
On that too, of what's permitted. So I, I think you can get more information when this comes back. Fire marshal is explaining what's in the fire code. But the fire code is what was triggering the requirements for the company in Ambler Yards that had to have the condition. And storage as an accessory use is something that's contemplated in the ordinance to, to address that particular issue. That is the fire code that was requiring all the safety. Those things, we'll make sure there's more information.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, so this is going to be a 24-hour storage facility, but only manned during operating hours? Or is it not going to be 24-hour access?
Yeah, my understanding is there are hours that they, that there's not accessible. So there will be a person in the office for, you know, call it eight hours a day, either five or six days a week. And their primary function is to onboard new members and, you know, generally keep an eye on the facility. And then renters are able to access the facility off of the, off of those hours. But it's not a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week kind of access. You know, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if it cuts off at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night and starts up at 6:00. But, you know, you're not going to have people coming through here at 3:00 in the morning.
Is there like lighting that would be? I guess my concern with the, with the neighborhood, you know, and the sightlines, which I think is great. I've been over to the site and I do understand that it's sunk down below. But are there, is there going to be lighting coming from the facility if it's open late at night? Will the lighting be on? Do we have any idea about, about that?
I mean, I would say the, the lighting we have today in that area of the campus was really a response to the buses being there. Where we, when we acquired the site, we did add a lot more lighting to that area. I don't, I would not expect any of the area, you know, lighting off of our campus to be impacted by this because, you know, most of the lighting would be at the building pointed out to the parking lot and down. Not any lighting pointed at the building, which then could go, you know, up into the neighborhood behind it.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Same, same thing with like security cameras. And we have, we already have cameras on that part of the facility, back part of the campus. I think that what Sean mentioned, we would just be enhancing that video coverage in the area.
Is the access point going to be from Mather's Road? Or is it going to be from the main entrance to Ambler? Like where's the access road?
I, I mean, I think people that are familiar with where the, the building sits could really access from either. But we anticipate branding the monument sign on Mather's for the storage facility. So we expect most of the traffic to come down Mather's into the site. But, you know, somebody who, again, is familiar with it certainly could come down Brookside and drive all the way through the campus to get there. But, but I don't anticipate any branded signage at that monument sign on Brookside. It would be on Mather's.
Do you think you have enough parking spaces to accommodate folks going to the storage facility?
Yes, we, one, one benefit of Ambler Yards is we have plenty of parking. The last parking count that we ran for all of this use showed us with, with about 100 excess parking spaces. And that was assuming a parking ratio for the self-storage building that's much higher than I think we'll ultimately end up at. So we'll be well over 100 excess parking spaces for both, when you account for both the apartment building, the self-storage building, and all of the other uses we have.
Okay, is there parking included with the units? So each unit gets one or two spaces or?
No.
No, okay.
No, you know, if somebody, yeah, I mean, the, I don't know the exact calculations of how often people come to the storage units, but it's pretty infrequent, so.
Time, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, okay.
How many parking, I'm sorry, I was going to ask about the apartments. I don't know if we were talking about.
I was asking about storage, but yeah, we can, I'm done with my storage questions. I could move to apartments, but I don't know about anybody else.
How many parking spaces in the, in that sort of, I'll call it a courtyard area. I know it's not a courtyard, but in front of the entrance facing inward towards Ambler Yards, how many parking spaces there for the?
There's 45 spaces directly adjacent to the building. And then there are literally hundreds within another 20, 30, 40 feet that are, that would be subject to the cross easement onto Ambler Yards.
I mean, I know, I know the area. I just wanted to sort of get a sense of how many spaces for the 43 units. That's.
Yeah, I believe it's, on the current picture there, it's 44 or 45.
Will they be reserved for the units or how will that first come, first served?
Yeah, I mean, my expectation is in the morning, you know, the apartment people will be parked there. And as they leave, then some of the office people will park there. And then when they leave in the evening, when the apartment people are coming back, that they'll, so those will get, you know, two separate cars per day typically.
I've heard that before from another developer and it didn't work out that way. So my concern, and I, and I, I love your spot. You know that. I think you guys do a great job. You do such a great job. In fact, that when I come to either eat there or meet, it's hard to find a spot. And, and let me just finish, Mark. And I get it. But so my concern is the folks that work from home who aren't going to leave their apartments. I mean, they're going to be nice units. So many people work from home. I'm, I'm sort of worried about that because I know you guys have a ton of overflow above, I guess, where?
Building 18, like.
Yeah. Yeah, up there. I know there's a ton of, there's that, yeah, there, there's always spaces there, but.
Sometimes.
Well, I mean, there's not any of that. But I guess, I don't necessarily know if I have a question. I, that's my concern.
Well, I just want to make an observation. I, I, Mike or Matt gets in at some ungodly early time every day. But I usually get there around 9:30 or 10:00. And then the days when I get there before 9:00, very easy to find a spot anywhere I need to park. Between 9:00 and 3:00 or 3:30, it's usually pretty crowded, particularly Tuesday to Thursday. But in the late afternoon and before 9:00, you can park almost anywhere you want to park on the campus. It's in the middle of the workday. And the other observation is correct. I have never seen in 10 years anybody parked up in that last block of parking that's shown in that upper lot. The worst I've ever had to do was park, you know, further up that lot when I came in later and walked a little bit. I've never, we've never been full, except during some of our more popular Friday night events.
Yeah, yeah, and that's sort of off the beaten path. My, my only concern is you're going to add, in theory, 60 cars. It may not be that many, but you have, what, between the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms, if everybody has a car, it's like 55. How much is it?
Eighty-six, 43 units, two cars.
Oh, well, I was thinking in the one bedroom, sort of average one car. But I, but I hear you, yeah. That, that, I mean, I know you guys have ample parking on-site. That's my concern.
Yeah, but also keep in mind, we have 10,000 square feet of office space there now. That parks about four per thousand. So there's around 40 cars that are parking in those office, in the houses that are going away.
Right.
So.
That's a fair point.
Your, your, your net add isn't anywhere close to that. Yeah, we're actually adding more parking.
Is the box that says track two has a line?
The box that says track two on that plan has a line going into a parking area that does not exist right now. The only parking that exists is the parking below it that's, that's further down. But that, I can't read the numbers, but there's a number on that.
Do you know or can you project how many cars are going to be coming in and out for the storage facility? If there's 600 units there?
I don't offhand remember what is in our parking study.
Very few.
But I think, I think the number that's been bandied about is about 10.
Yeah, most, most storage facilities of this size have eight parking spaces allocated to it, 10 or 12. That's how infrequent the parking is used.
Okay, so you don't anticipate a large, like 10% of the owners coming every day to check on their goods?
No, they don't visit very often.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's closer to like 1%.
So I just had a couple of questions. And just to clarify, when you're saying track two, that's the 24 and the 21 parking spaces?
Yeah.
Those are the, those are the ones that are being added that don't currently exist?
Well.
I'll point, hang on, Matt.
Yeah, currently there is.
These, these are new?
Just those or the 21 as well? The 21 is there?
The 21, the 21 that would exist today is probably 25. And then we're adding, so we're going from 25 to about 45.
Okay.
On that, on that lot today.
Okay. So I know that there are times, this is not a question, more like an observation, but there are times, living so close to this, that you do have events that are so popular that I think you do exceed all the, all the parking that you do have and it spills onto the streets. And so when that does occur, understanding that now there's going to be residents or apartments there, is there any mitigation strategies that you're looking to employ as it relates to that? That's my first question. And then the second kind of question or comment is, I know that there's been a whole bunch of community meetings and we engage with the community. From that feedback, can you just let me know what about this plan is reflective of those conversations in that, that community outreach?
Sure. So I guess the answer to the first question is, I mean, we, we host those food truck Fridays that we have. And Mark, Mark and my general feeling is we're doing that for the community and for some benefit to the campus. We make nothing. In fact, those events cost us money. So if, if the feedback that we're getting is we need to cut those events down.
That's not my feedback.
No, I, I'm just going to say, I'm a tree and we enjoy the food trucks. They're delicious. I think that there are some people that have concerns or maybe some issues with how maybe all of our neighbors not being cognizant that their neighbors are also there as well and maybe would like to access their driveways on occasion. I think I live far enough away that I don't care. But I mean, that there are others that I feel that we are, have to be respective of the impact that it does put on, on their Friday evenings. And that if they're not planning to go, or even if they are sometimes, that there is some kind of issue when neighbors aren't being respectful of other neighbors.
Sure.
So just trying to see if there's any cognizant like preparation as it relates to how to mitigate that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have, we've stationed one of our maintenance engineers at the entrance. This, I think we started that this year. Last year, to help with direct people to where they know parking is, to try to keep them more on our site and less out of the neighborhood. We also, at least at one point, put signs along the neighborhood on one side of the street to at least keep the parking on one side. So it, it didn't create such a narrow driveway. You know, yeah, the, the, the police have certainly been to the site to help address any of these things. I mean, we're, we're open to continuing all those things and, and further, you know, try, try to make it better so that there's less impact, you know, up, up to the community. We've also, and I think, Tim, you probably can talk to this, but we are netting more spaces in the middle of the site just by configuring the parking a little better. So we're actually adding more parking to the site as part of this. So we will be able to.
As a storage facility?
By, by, yeah, we're, we're, we're taking down a 4,000-square-foot flex building, 1,000-square-foot that used to be the old fire pump house, and a 250,000-gallon water tank. We're taking that down to help reconfigure that. So, but just by reconfiguring the existing asphalt that we have, not only are we putting this building in there, but we're generating more parking spaces. So we have more parking. Um, so we'll, we have more parking spaces to accommodate more people parking on the site as well.
Okay.
And then your second question, oh, uh, what, what specifically did we incorporate from the, the meetings with the neighborhood into the plan? Off the top of my head, um, we, we removed all of the pedestrian entrances facing out of the site. Um, so the only way to get into the site is either through card access on our side of the fence or through the main lobby entrance. We. Yeah, uh, there's no balconies that are, that are facing out to the neighborhood. The aesthetic design, um, yeah, that was primarily, primarily through the two thousand nineteen, um, discussions we had changed significantly. I mean, our first iterations were a very modern style building. And now it looks maybe best word I can say is probably more like a country club than, you know, some, something that belongs like in Fishtown. Um, so we've carried that through, um, you know, with our, with our new architect on board.
Given you the opportunity to say all the things.
Yeah, you, you reduce the density a little, did you?
No, I mean, so you reduce the density. Are, are you preserving any of the, the large trees that are on the Spring Garden Street? Are you preserving any?
We, I don't think we've, we've looked at that yet.
So the, by the Brookside and Spring Garden, there's no conversation around those trees and preserving, not the Francis. Think about the other side.
Okay. Yeah, um, yeah, we, um, thank you. We, we, we pulled it. So right now the, the houses are about, about twenty feet off the road. This new building will be uh, thirty feet off of Spring Garden and forty feet off of Francis, I believe. So we've pulled, pulled the building further back.
Okay.
Um, from the street to create more green space, you know, along the street. Yeah, the, the third floor leaf roof, roofline that Kristen had mentioned is, is raked back to again, cr- create less of a, of a feeling of a mass on, on the street.
I know this isn't part of the plan because this is what you're presenting, but this would be an opportunity. Is there any proposed, um, ideas around channeling traffic flow?
So certainly at, at Brookside and, and Spring Garden Street, we, we know there are some, been some concerns with traffic exiting the site using Brookside for entrance and exit. Uh, we've looked at a couple of different configurations, signage, paint striping, physical concrete pork chop kind of configurations. So I think we are cognizant of, of that issue and willing to look for solutions. I think I'd like to include, uh, Bowman Associates in those conversations to make sure that our proposed solutions aren't causing more problems for the community than they're solving. But I think we are cognizant of that need and willing to work with the community to fix that.
In, in a previous iteration, it seemed like there was a sort of a, a small plaza in, on that corner in front of the building, like maybe benches. I, I can't remember exactly, but it seemed much more inviting to public, um, use, I guess.
I, I think that's part of the feedback we got from the neighborhood. They didn't want any activity there.
Want that.
So we eliminated that.
Okay.
That's another point then.
There is, there is ample space there that would be taken up by landscaping to buffer between the neighborhood and the building itself, um, which took place of any plaza that would have been there.
Yeah, and I, I think that was, um, that older plan had one of the main entrances facing Spring Garden. So it would have been like an area where our residents could have come out into. And again, the, the feedback is where they wanted everything pushed to the interior of Ambler Yards. Um, so we, we did away with that entrance. Um, and then I, I'm guessing we, that's when we probably lost the, the benches.
Any additional questions or comments?
I don't know if this is for Tim or Kristen, but track number two, is that intended to be a separate tax parcel, separate lot? Because track number two would not meet any of the requirements for the F industrial district.
Track two is the existing, oh, I'm sorry, track two, the proposal is to have that rezoned to the F district.
Yeah, but you'd be creating a non-conforming lot. The minimum lot size in F is eight acres. Plus it wouldn't meet any of the setback requirements.
Well, we did add setback, uh, criteria to the ordinance that we've added. Um, good catch on the lot size. We'll have to look at that. Lot, track one is pursuant to a ninety-nine year.
Right, that's the BAS.
Has to be separate from track two. We can't merge them. That's the issue there. Uh, so we'll have to look at the minimum lot size.
Not looking for an answer tonight, just raising the issue.
Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
Any additional questions?
Uh, I, I just have a, a couple of, um, you stated that you had a series of community meetings. Um, just kind of how many, when were they?
Uh, yeah, we had, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, we had, uh, either two or three. I was trying to figure out how many we had, but I know it was either two or three. Back two thousand nineteen and then last year, two thousand twenty-four, we had three meetings. Uh, was, uh, one of the summer, September and November, I believe were the, were the, were the dates. Um, we had, um, we had them at our Ambler Yards campus. Um, and at the first meeting, we, uh, presented again, the, the renderings. Um, we, I'm sorry, we actually started out going up to the location of the self-storage, proposed self-storage building. And then we took the group to the proposed apartment, uh, building so that they could, you know, see in the actual situation where we're talking about. Then we went back down and we, um, discussed, there were, you know, a bunch of questions about the use and traffic. Um, uh, that we, uh, we had a good dialogue through. Uh, then the second meeting was more focused on traffic. Uh, both our traffic engineer and the township's traffic engineer was there. Um, and focused a lot on traffic and maybe some of the perceptions of traffic. And then the engineers were able to talk more about kind of what the maybe more with their, their expertise is and describe the reality of the traffic. Uh, and then the last one, um, the last one was more focused on just a, a general discussion. Um, and, um, you know, it was, it was a very good discussion. I think the, the plans you see reflect a lot of the feedback that we were given and I will readily admit they are better plans today than when we started. And a lot of that was through, um, the discussions we had with the neighbors.
And how were these, how, how was attendance? How many people attended? How, were you able to get the, I guess, notice of the meeting out to the general, to most of the population in general area?
Uh, yeah, we coordinated with, uh, with Jamie and Mimi to provide notice out. Uh, I would say attendance was anywhere from kind of twelve, fourteen to maybe twenty people. Depending on the, the time and some people came early and left, some people came at the end. But I, I felt like we had a pretty good attendance and a lot of them were consistent people. Uh, a number, I would say maybe half were consistent people coming along. The other half were just, you know, attended one event and provided their feedback and.
All right, and besides traffic, what were some of the other concerns that were brought up?
Uh, some of the concerns were people walking through the neighborhood across Spring Garden, which again is one of the reasons why we um, limited any access to the interior of the site. There'll be, um, you know, fencing from the building out. So even people really can't just walk out the building and just turn and, and get out.
And another concern was the, the, what, what would the quality of the apartments be? And these are gonna be, you know, fir- first-class apartments. We're providing amenities like meeting rooms, public space, a lobby with, uh, kind of a country club feel. There's a dog washing station. I mean, I forget what else. We have a mailroom and these are gonna be very nice apartments. And, uh, you know, the people who are going to be able to afford them are, uh, you know, professionals with, and with very few children.
Okay, so essentially issues were traffic, quality of the apartments and uh, people walking through the neighborhood. There were no other concerns that were brought up?
Uh, the, the aesthetic, aesthetic of the apartment, you know, the, the, the look again, the, in the two thousand nineteen discussions where we started out was a much more modern design and, you know, we've now moved to, I think, something that's more fitting.
Just, there was a general concern about, you know, plopping the building into the neighborhood and it, what, what, how it would change. You know, whatever, traffic and, and pedestrian. So that was just a general concern that we addressed with all the other issues.
Yeah, and then some of the neighbors directly across the street were asking about construction timelines and, you know, construction uh, impact to them in particular. So we talked about, um, you know, when, when a project might construction start, how long it would take, um, some things like that.
And how do you believe the overall reception was from the residents that were there? Was something that was accepting or resisting or any contacts, uh, outside of those meetings?
My, my own view, you know, there was certainly a number of people against the project uh, at the first meeting last year. And by the last meeting, um, there was very few local people against it. Um, there were, uh, there were a lot more vocal people for it. And there were some people who were basically indifferent. But the, the, the vocal opposition was extremely limited, in my view.
Okay, thank you.
Neil, paragraph three.
I, I have the answer, but I just wanna make sure all the individual lots get consolidated in track two.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Any additional questions from the board? So this is a presentation we're gonna open up to the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public? You just come forward and podium is yours. Yes.
Hi, I'm Jack Downey. I'm at, uh, four twenty-one Marion Avenue. Uh, I've been in the township for, since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I saw the memo for the meeting. That was the first time I heard about the project. Um, I love Ambler Yards. I consistently go to the brewery. It's the cheapest here. I walk home. I do drive through the back way to get to Ambler Yards. And you guys need to upgrade that road a little bit. Um, my major concern is traffic. Um, there's a lot of cars that come down Houston and uh, again, no slight to the police here. Um, they sit in front of my house and watch people go through the stop sign by, uh, intersection there. And my concern is that traffic is gonna continue. Um, I see signs when I'm coming down, uh, the back way into my house. Um, forget the name of it. I swear I wasn't at Ambler Yards yet. But there's signs for Francis, no access going down that road. I don't know if that works or not, but, um, basically traffic in that area up, going to, uh, more cars and the storage units. And then, you know, I'm not sure of the traffic. Um, the other concern I have is, um, a lot of storage units, they park trailers or motor homes and stuff like that. I'm not sure if that's in the plan or if, uh, that's something that we don't wanna see. Um, uh, we talked about the fire. And if, you know, we're talking about chemicals down there, if that building, one of those, you know, they're well-controlled. I get that. Um, but if that storage unit goes on fire because something happens, that's also a concern of mine. Um, and that's it. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming out.
Hello, uh, my name's Sandy Silver here. I'm four sixteen Brookside. Sandy Silver here. Thank you. Um, first of all, I'm just gonna say that I love Ambler Yards. We love, we love it. We use it all the time. We do a lot of walking around the campus. Um, and my concern is the traffic on Brookside has slowed down since we put the signs up. But we still see people come down Brookside in the morning, um, and go straight across. And I, I mean, rather than having a police officer just sitting there constantly and watching, I don't know how we can change that, but we still see that happen. The other thing is, um, along where the little sign is, it says track two. Along there is our big fluffy, um, plants and they're great. They're beautiful. But as a walker, uh, we're kind of in danger all the time when we walk across from Brookside into the campus. Um, and it's not really, maybe we shouldn't even be walking on the road. We should probably be sidewalking and whatever, but um, those plants are kind of dangerous because you can't see the barbed line. You can't see the cars coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a sidewalk, um, running on, as looking at the plan on the right side of Brookside entrance that there, and there is a crosswalk that takes you over to the, yeah. Um, but yeah, I think, um, they are, they are like ornamental grasses and, and we probably need to do a little better job of keeping them out of the road. Um, yeah, yeah, they've, they've, they've been there for. Yeah.
Uh, so I, I think my main concern is, is for myself personally, is just the safety of walking around the campus. And when the people are walking from their apartment across to the parking lot over there, if they have to, um, crossing that driveway, um, could be dangerous. So I don't know how to fix that, but I just thought I'd mention. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Rich Ryan. I'm at four-two-six Brookside. Um, I just have a few concerns and questions. One is, are the houses currently there now? Are they zoned C residential? Track two. According to the lower winning zoning map, they are.
I think they are.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Is it C?
Yeah, they're C, they're C residential.
Yeah, so all those houses along Spring Garden Street are currently zoned C residential, as far as I know. Uh, which is what our neighborhood is owned. Um, so I would be concerned that, you know, that could set a precedent for them to be able to change that zoning. Um, so somebody else could take a plot of land and change their houses into a multifamily or whatever. So that would be one concern I have. Also, the traffic, I really find it hard to believe that there wouldn't be increased traffic. I know you said you did some studies, but you know, I've been on the street for thirty years. And I also love Ambler Yards and I really appreciate everything you guys have done up until now. Um, we, we utilize it. But, you know, being there thirty years, I've seen it busy before you guys had it. I've seen it empty. Um, and I've seen it come around again. And I think it's really good for the township, but this really seems like, uh, a stretch to me and I think it would, uh, change our street. I don't know how dramatically, but our street, we can't afford any more traffic. It's a narrow street. We have no sidewalks. There's parking on both sides of the street, which means the kids that walk to school, people that walk their dogs, everybody is walking in the middle of the street. So any traffic on our street is gonna be, uh, you know, problematic for us. So, um, that's all I have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a person on the line there.
I, I have a question in response to Mr. Ryan's question. We would have to change the zoning for like any Jason homeowner to do something like, right? So the, the precedent would just be, maybe I'm wrong about this, but like our willingness to do it versus somebody could just do it, correct? Okay, all right. I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Any additional? Resident. Any online? I can't see him, but you can tell.
Hi, ma- may I speak?
Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Ron Shamrin. I live at four-two-nine East Francis. And just like all of my other neighbors, I love Ambler Yards. It's a, it's a great place. Thank you very much for all you do at Ambler Yards. Uh, I do have concerns about the traffic as well, not for Brookside, but for Francis. My kids walk to school. We have cars parked on the side of the street. So if any increase in Brookside or probably, oh, traffic in Brookside or probably increased traffic in Francis, I do have a concern. One of my questions though is the current residential buildings, um, the supply of utility to them, mainly water and sewer. So if there were new apartment buildings placed where the residential. So if there were new apartment buildings placed where the residential buildings are now, what would be the impact to Francis, Spring Garden and Brookside for water supply? Would we lose water pressure? Would something have to be, uh, remediated in order to support the of water in that area? And the same thing for sewer. So would our properties be subject to uh, backups because of the, uh, infrastructure, uh, and the added, uh, use of it from those apartment buildings? Same thing with, uh, power and internet service, but those are my main concerns. And you may not have the ability to answer that right now, but if you would be able to answer that in the future, that'd be appreciated.
And yeah, would you like me to, to take that one? Sure. Hey, Ron, this is Tim Woodrum, the civil engineer for the project. And obviously we haven't got into any full design as of this time. But one of the things that will be analyzed by both my office as well as the township sewer engineers and and town engineers is those potential impacts on water and sewer. So water pressure, no. Uh, the water pressure is independent of, of a number of connections. It's really done by the elevation of the tank and the size of the mains. So uh, water pressure would be fine. Uh, sewer capacity, uh, there is no moratorium or uh, projected moratorium or restrictions in capacity for the sewer system, but that is one of the things we'll need to analyze and confirm with that Ambler treatment plant as well as the collection and conveyance line. So all those things that we looked at. If this ordinance change goes through, there will be a full land development process that will get much deeper into those utility connections and impacts and, and calculations to make sure that, but your concerns are, are not realized.
I have a question in relationship to that. Um, so this is actually for our engineer. We're doing or you have done a large study on stormwater issues in this area. And all the stormwater seems to go into one tiny, uh, sewer pipe at the bottom. And I wonder if these new facilities would impact the study you've already done and, um, the, uh, taking care of that stormwater.
They will be required to provide stormwater management for these projects that do not exist on the site today. So, um, from a stormwater standpoint, they would be reducing the flow from their site, um, to the study point, which was the culvert that goes underneath the railroad tracks.
Okay.
It would be a benefit, yes.
And I, I just wanted to address the, the, the person online had a question about Francis Avenue. Um, with the proposed apartment building, we would actually be closing the curb cuts on Francis into those houses. Um, so right now there are people coming down Francis, uh, to access that driveway. That driveway would go away. There would be um, a continuous, uh, fence along Francis. So there would really be absolutely no reason for somebody to come down Francis, um, and park on Francis to get into anything in Amber Yards, which they actually can do now. We discourage it, of course. But it is possible for somebody to park there who kind of knows what they're doing. Um, they wouldn't be able to do that going forward. So the, the traffic on Francis, um, certainly should go down because of that. No, be, it's completely independent.
Any additional questions or comments?
Come on up, ma'am. Sandy Silver, four one six Brookside. Um, I was just wondering where the garbage, the large garbage bins will be for the apartment building for the people who live on Francis on that, on the right side of the apartments.
Internal to the building, there is a trash room that is actually, you go, go, there's a trash room right beyond this doorway here. Right in this location. So trash collection would occur by the collector coming up into the parking area, wheeling out the dumpsters, offloading them, putting them back into the trash room. So.
I know that there's a lot of people still, even though school has started, still on vacation and still enjoying their Tuesday evenings, I guess. But some of the questions or comments that have come to me as a board member have really just focused on some of the things that I've mentioned. A, the preservation of some of the trees or the larger trees that are on that corner, Brookside and Spring Garden. And, and just overall concerns related to the traffic. And what that's going to do is it relates to the character of the neighborhoods. Francis and, and Brookside both have smaller street lifts. Parking is on both sides. Unique to Brookside is there is a portion of the street that doesn't have houses on both sides. But Francis doesn't have that luxury. So it's both sides parking on the street. And I think the concern is traffic that, you know, needs to go a speed that's acceptable for a residential neighborhood and ensuring that that, that occurs. And just the increase of the amount of traffic, because right now those are streets where we just, just walk in the street. And we have forever. Um, and, and to the gentleman that spoke earlier, Marion, we do it on Marion, we do it on Houston. And so just the concern about that change that potentially could come, and it's kind of the unknown. Um, but just being cognizant of, of that is something that the neighbors are very concerned about, is that change. With that, I'd like to thank you so much for your presentation and your time this evening.
And thank you for all the time that you spent with the neighbors and, and all the changes that you made to your proposal before even getting here.
Appreciate you. Thank you, you as well. I'm glad that you guys know that you can leave at your leisure. Appreciate you coming out.
Their first time.
Um, we're going to move on though and, and, uh, talk about our next topic, which is a pro- proposed zoning ordinance amendment. That is included in our board packet, the memo has been provided by, um, our assistant township man- manager. Included in the board packet is, is the identification of a redlined version of the zoning ordinance sections that are subject to the proposed amendments. Summaries were provided in the memo, but the actual redlined information was included also as well in the board packet. When, while a comprehensive revision of the zoning ordinance is forthcoming, follow the adoption and the implementation of our comprehensive plan, these minor adjustments will address consistency issues that occur when applying the code today. The proposed ordinance has been reviewed by the Building and Zoning Subcommittee and, um, Lynn Bush of the Zoning Hearing Board, along with township staff, professional consultants, and is ready for discussion by the board. Are there any questions or concerns related to what was provided in our board packet? Seeing none, are there any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the initiation of the, um, advertisement of a legal notice for the zoning ordinance amendment to update necessary uses and other minor revisions. Is there a second? All those in favor? Everybody vote?
I did.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. I couldn't hear you. Um, next up is the consideration, um, or a review of a sketch plan for gas pumps in a convenience store at eleven hundred North Bethlehem Pike. I'm not sure who is here on behalf of the applicant, but if you want to come on up, I apologize for not knowing. You Mr. Blue?
Yes, I am.
Oh, Mr. Blue, I know you.
I have an age well.
Great to meet.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much for hearing us this evening. Um, just a, a couple of quick, uh, quick points. We, we've had a couple of meetings here with, with, uh, with the board. And we've taken all that into consideration. I mean, we haven't just turned a blind, up a blind eye to it. We, we realize what the board wants us to do and we've tried to accommodate everything on that. Ju- just that, just as a quick, because I, I know it's getting late. I, I know you've got other things that you want to do, like at home, your children or husbands or wives or whatever.
Yeah, I take all the time you need.
As long as you're done by eight thirty. Uh, so the, uh, presently it's a service station about twelve hundred and ninety-five square feet. Uh, as, as you can see up on the board in front of us. It's a one-story brick and stucco. It's, uh, a service station, uh, and repair. There's three. Okay, there are, are three gas pumps up there. Um, there's, there's no rhyme or reason as far as getting in and out of, of that facility. So what we propose to do and we've, we've done before, we've done this before, but i- if we can just go back to the one or two slides, Jamie, if you don't mind. For, for the, uh, the zoning, this is owned, uh, D three, which is a special business district. And under the special dis- uh, business district, uh, the following co- comment, and I'm just reading right from the permitted uses. The following combination of uses when authorized as a special exception by the zoning hearing board, which usually subject the area to requirements. So they, it, they say they combine use of gas, gasoline service station and sale of food and or convenience items. So it's, it, it's, it's a unique lot. It's very small. Uh, we don't need the lot area because it, they asked that there be two acres, which is something that Royal Farms or a Wawa would need. But we're not a Royal Farms or a Wawa. We're a family-owned business, uh, that has approximately six other facilities. Um, I've, I provided, um, the location of those facilities for people to go to see. Jamie, if you could just, if you don't mind, uh, spin down a little bit. So, so that, but what, we started off with six gas pumps because that's what we were hoping to get. The board said, well, we think that's too much, so we've built it down to four. We got some more feedback saying, well, how about three? So three is what we have out there today. And that's what we're showing on there, but we have a different configuration of the gas pumps. The convenience store has only increased by about twenty-four percent. And what we're going to do is we're going to, if we're successful, tear down the existing, um, convenience store and build a new one. And we've made a commitment that we would work with the staff so that it doesn't look like a convenience store, it looks like Lower Gwinnett. I mean, I've, I've been involved in Lower Gwinnett. Uh, I was involved for about twenty years and I, I know that when we built the, this facility, we just didn't slap something together. It was given a lot of thought and we're willing to commit for that with like either a stone water table or something like that. It's a little premature for us to, to go to the expense of having an architect at this point, but if, if we continue on this road, we'll get an architect involved and what, what the building's going to look like. We also have, uh, nine parking spaces out there by our design where right now I think there's three or four. So, you know, uh, we're also, uh, meeting with Pendot within the next week. We've shown a right in, right out on the closest to the intersection, uh, entrance and a full service further up, up the road. If this gas station goes out of business, there, there is no more gas stations or gas facilities in Lower Gwinnett Township. So, um, at one of the presentations, we, we showed it was like two and a half miles up to uh, North one three oh nine and then down to Ambler for the Shell Station down there. So, you know, we're, we're more of a providing a convenience for the residents of Lower Gwinnett Township. But we're also doing it to, to make a dollar, quite honestly. Um, if you, and we, we, we've wanted shown, like, w- we're not, we're not going to just put the, the, the trash compactors out. We're going to have a masonry, uh, facility around it. We'll, we can flash it with stone if right there, just create the dumpster enclosure. We have a detail for that on, on the plan. So we're, we're not going to have them out. They're, they're going to be hidden. Now, people may have gone over to the one in, um, in Louisville and said, huh, th- this looks horrible. Well, the reason why it looks horrible, because we haven't been able to start construction out there. You know, there's, there's one or two more agreements that have to be, uh, lined up. But, you know, uh, we have, I think in the packet, oh, that, that's a good one too. So you can see o- on the era of photography, you can see where the existing facility is located. Uh, that's the one with the speckled roof. And where our new one will be located, we're five feet off the, 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 uh, right of way for Old Bethlehem Pike, five feet off the neighbor's property. And we've configured this building, which is about a two hundred and fifty or three hundred square foot addition. That's it. It's not, it's not a, an ominous or very large building. It's just, that's what we think, well, we can work with as far as having, you know, um, the facilities in there to satisfy our customer base. That's the, that's the masonry en- enclosure that we are, you know, perceiving for the, for the project. And there's, there's the mapping, you know, we're talking, if this goes out of business, you know, there's a, um, you know, one point six miles, you know, from Spring House to the Snoco Station. There's two miles, uh, from Spring House and the seven eleven gas station. So you can see it's, the convenience will be you know, impacted, uh, for a lot of people. And we're just here trying to get some guidance, but this is very important. This, this was typical of, um, the client purchased the one on the left-hand side with the orange roof. And then he, uh, you know, went in there, you know, got at the building, re-flashed it, put, you know, a standing scene roof, you know, a stone water table, re-did the parking lot. And you can see there's a, a marked difference between what it was and what it was or what it is as April first, twenty twenty-five. So they invest money and it's not like they just throw a, a coat of paint on it there. They, they want it to be as attractive for, you know, their clients as, as much as being attractive to the general public. So I, that's my pitch for tonight. I, I appreciate, uh, all your time and effort on this and uh, we're hoping to get some, some guidance. Uh, one, one thing, you know, we have an agreement of sale, a signed agreement of sale that, when I say we, not me, but there's a signed agreement of sale which runs out in November, so we still have time to to, to do what we have to do. Okay?
Questions, comments, feedback from the board?
Um, I, I appreciate all the time and the effort you guys have put into this. And, and my concern is not so much the look of it. I, I trust that you'll make it look nice, that you'll, you know, that, that you'll improve the aesthetics of the of what, you know, isn't very aesthetically pleasing at the moment. So I-
With due respect to Mr. Hunt.
Right, of course. But, but I, 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 I don't, I, I believe that you guys will do that, but I'm, I'm just concerned right now, at least every time I drive by, maybe one car is in there. It's just not a very heavily used gas station or service area. And my concern is if we create this, and if you create this really nice sort of destination, it's really going to increase traffic to an already pretty overloaded intersection. Even though we did just redo it and expand it, it's still a very busy, you know, intersection. And so that's-
Well, well, we have, we have two things we have to do. We have to satisfy, uh, boundary from a traffic standpoint.
Yeah.
And more importantly, you know, um, not that balance not important, but I would say more importantly, we have to satisfy them.
Right.
So, which-
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just am nervous about, um, sort of creating a, a location that, um, is going to draw people in. As, you know, it seems like residents are getting by fine without a gas station in the township. Um, I don't know how, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't think it really gets used much.
I think it's primarily, primarily utilized as a service station much more than a gra- gas station currently right now. So I think the idea, and I don't want to steal your time, but I think the idea of actually creating a convenience store and a gas station that individuals might want to go to will increase traffic and increase like flow to an area that we don't want it to increase to. And I, and I'm not, I, I share the sentiments that Janine kind of shared.
I love them.
I think that it would look beautiful. I would love a gas station where I don't have to go far, especially if they have a little tap and I don't have to get out the car. I'm never going to go into the convenience store, so I'm not your target audience there, but there are people that will. And I think that that will draw people to a really randomly utilized service station where you're dropping your car off to get it fixed. Maybe get a little gas while you're there, but there's not a heavily flow of individuals trying to get gas at that service station right now. Not from by almost fifty years of living here, has it been heavily utilized. Back when there was a Texaco across- heavily utilized. Back when there was a Texaco across the street, I think that was utilized a lot more even than as a gas station than this, this spot is as, as a service station. So again, I don't think that you wouldn't make it beautiful. I don't think that there wouldn't be lovely refreshments. I think that's my concern. More people are going to want to go there. It's going to create congestion that doesn't already exist in a very congested intersection. That's not managed well despite all of the investment of monies and time and energy that we've done to kind of create the roadway to be as, as, as highly functioning as possible. Even doing all of that, I think increasing anything in that area could be dangerous for pedestrians and or car, you know, vehicular movement. And it, it just could condense an area that doesn't need any condensing. And again, I apologize.
No, I mean, you, yeah, I, I agree. And it's when you said pedestrian, it just sort of struck a chord with me because we are trying to improve walkability in that area. And I just worry if we're adding more. Yeah, right. There will be, yeah, but there, there's still two kind of entrances into the parking lot with cars coming in and out. And I just, I know you'll design it as safely as possible. And I know that Bowman would ensure that it's as safe as possible. But that's really the genesis of my concern is just having more people drawn to a location that otherwise people might drive by because they see the prices of gas and they just keep, they're like, I can make it to Wawa, you know?
Basically.
They, they have a point of sale system that tracks every dollar coming in and out. And you'd be surprised, there is not a onslaught of a lot of cars there. And I can provide that to either your township engineer. So he can report back to you, you know, what, what the traffic patterns or boundary, whatever you deal, you feel is appropriate. But we can, we can provide that information. Like I said, we have a couple of months left to,
And I think that just in all fairness, because I can tell that you're taking time, energy and effort to make this as aesthetically pleasing and as accommodating as, as we need it to be to even be here. My concern is those two different types of services that are going to be provided. It's not going to be gas. It'll be a convenience store. It's not going to be a service station with the option of getting a little gas if you choose to be there. It'll be a place which is, it isn't right now, which is a destination where people might want to go and get snacks or get their delicious treats or whatever before they're going wherever. Right now, I don't think it's utilized in that way. My concern is really around pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, increasing in an area where it's probably the place that we don't need it to be increased right now.
This point of sale would be from an active facility that they have. It, it's, it wouldn't be hypothetically.
Yeah.
To be active.
No, I'm not discounting-
Hypothetical to this location. I mean, they may be able to talk about location in Quaker Town and location on 73, but the reality is we don't know what it'll be here until it's here. It would be, that would be helpful data, but I don't think it would be dispositive as to what the traffic will be like at this facility. That, that's the-
I, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it, it might tell us the breakdown of gas versus convenience store goals. But I don't know. And you've been very willing to provide information. And I understand they, obviously your clients really wanted this project to happen. I, I share the concerns that-
I'm sure Mr. Adam wants it to happen too.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, that may or may not be the case, but it doesn't ultimately matter for us. I mean, we have to do what's best for the township. But I would just say, I, I share the concerns that Stuckit and Ms. Martin expressed. I mean, I do have, I have those concerns.
And I, and I just want to be clear, we want a gas station. We want delicious foods and snacks. I just think that this, this location and this area, as much as I keep thinking about it and mulling it over, like, I think that it is probably not the most optimal location for us to have it. And again, I'm very appreciative of the time and energy. And I understand the time and energy and money potentially that you've spent trying to make this work. And I think it's close. I just can't get past the idea of increasing that volume of, and then this is just me and I'm just one board member. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear and, and articulating it.
Very clear, very clear. And like I said, we, we still have another, at least two months to try to put the square peg in the square hole. Okay?
And I will not interrupt anyone else. Is there anyone else to add some comment?
I, I would, I'm not going to be on the board after December, so my opinion might not carry as much weight, but I agree wholeheartedly with what's been said already. My concern is that when I go as a driver through that intersection now, people are trying to get through that desperately fast so they don't have to wait, you know, for the light to circle. So going fast through that intersection, say coming from Summey Town and turning left is, I, I just think it's not going to be safe. And I can't imagine that Pendot is going to be happy with adding a, a potentially a high-traffic destination at that very busy intersection. So I, I love the idea of having the addition of your business to the township, but not in that spot unless our engineer can reassure me that there won't be any accidents, no rear-ending.
There you go, Chad.
I just think we're, we're asking for trouble to have an additional, you know, traffic slowing down there to pull in and pull out.
I mean, who, who, who knows Pendot's law will say you can only have one, one entrance. A right in, right out period, and it has to be further, we'll say north on, on Summey Town Pike. Not sure, but I mean, we'll keep your professionals up, up to speed. I think we have an escrow account. Right, Jamie? So, you know, we'll just see what the next month or so comes with. And I, I've got a-
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to pile on. And I, I agree with the statements that have been stated. I also just concerned with, there's, you know, nine, it's a small lot. There's going to be nine parking spots. I mean, I just think the delivery, I mean, when they come in to deliver any of the, you know, stuff for the convenience store, even with the bringing gas and onto the lot and having cars having to maneuver around that and just then what's going to happen with the traffic. It just, to me, it seems a very congested area that is just going to bring problems.
We, we can control the vendors. In other words, like, if they come to deliver gas, we can say, don't come at 8:30 in the morning. We want you to come at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. That's, we, we've, we've done many Wawa and Royal Farms and you can, you can control that.
And, and I do understand and I appreciate that. It just, you know, there's not just one kind of concern. There's multiple concerns and that's really what is kind of creates the issue. But I do want to also say that we do appreciate the, the time that's been put in here and we definitely respect that. And it just, this location is just unique to the, so it makes it very difficult, but we do appreciate all the time and effort that's been put into it in the, the presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too. We care.
Next up, we have consideration of our forest evaluation and strategic magic plan. Magic management plan. Could be magic though. Going to turn it over to John so he can let us know.
All right, magic time.
Make it happen, John.
All right. So as the board knows, a lot of times when developers come, they can't necessarily put all the trees back that they're taking out during development project. And a lot of times we get a fee in lieu of trees. We put that all into an account that we refer to as a tree bank. So the idea behind this project was to come up with a strategic plan to figure out how should we use that money most effectively through the township? To get to that answer, we brought Val Leggett from Gilmore in. And she is a certified arborist and many other letters and things like that that I can never remember all that stuff. And she went through, we asked her two things. One, to take a handful of properties that are township-owned properties. And I should stress, this is all for township-owned forested areas. And go through and do an evaluation of them. See what they really need. Do they need more trees? Do they need things we did out, things like that? And then come back to us and say, based on what I've seen, this is how you can strategically use that money. These are the things that need to be on first, and things need to be done second and third and so on. So that is what she has put together for us. And really what it turns into is a methodology that I want the board to hear tonight. To see how we're going to be able to use this money effectively. And a lot of those questions are going to be things like, what can we do now internally with the Public Works team with what they have? What can we do with the Public Works team with renting some equipment? What are we going to need to bid out to other folks? And that's how we can kind of bracket that money to use effectively. We're also going to be using some new tools in Tracer that we're building right now to help track and manage this thing as well. So without further ado, Val, I want to give a question, then I'll jump back to the end.
Hi, as John said, my name is Val Leggett. I'm a registered landscape architect and a certified arborist with Gilmore and Associates. And I'm here.
Sure. Is that better?
I gotta get it right.
All right. How's that? I'm very soft spoken, so if I need to speak up, please feel free to say something. So what I was asked to do was an assessment of these first priority areas that were determined by the township to evaluate the woodlands along the trails in those areas and to determine some priority areas, issues of concern. And then based on those evaluations, make recommendations for strategies to manage and care for and expand those woodland areas. To determine priority rankings for tree removal and replanting, that would be implemented through Tracer. To make recommendations for tree bank expenditures within those first priority areas to address liability issues, maintain forest health, and generate healthy forest habitat in those areas. And also to do some invasive species management and planting site maintenance recommendations. The first priority areas that I was requested to look at include the, the Dagger Road Trail, Penn Oak Trail, the Estates and Reserve Sections of the Trueland Trail, Meadow Creek Foxfield Equestrian Trail Easement, Centennial Park and Penn Ambler Park. So there were some limitations to what I could do with the study as, as far as the work I could do is concerned. So the, the evaluation was only done on township-owned properties. So trees on adjacent private properties were not evaluated as part of this study. And only trees within view of an accessible trail were looked at. I only looked at trees from the ground level. I don't climb trees, so I couldn't evaluate what's way up in the air. And some areas were not accessible at the time of evaluation. So I'm going to take you through each of those priority areas and kind of give you the highlights of what I found in those areas and priority items recommended to be addressed in those areas. So first is Dagger Road Trail. The primary issue of concern for this area was, I found approximately between 60 and 70 hazardous trees along that very, very short section of trail, which were highly concerning. So removal of those trees was prioritized and Public Works addressed that this past winter and did tree removal. It took them about a month. They rented equipment. They did a great job. And you can see some of the images from that removal on the screen. I also noted some invasive species and vine growth. Vine growth can be concerning because it chokes out trees and puts weight on those trees and creates hazards in itself. So priority items for Dagger Road Trail include ongoing monitoring of tree health along the trail. After those trees were removed, we still want to monitor for a while to make sure no further hazardous trees become apparent. And that if they do, they can be addressed promptly. Some vine removal is recommended. Understory clearing at the trailhead for some greater visibility at that intersection with the road. And some future supplementary understory reforestation is, is possible on that site. So at Penn Oak Trail, there are also areas of hazardous trees that need to be addressed, particularly large areas of ash trees that are primarily dead. There are large areas dominated by invasive vegetation and you can see some of them highlighted on that map along with some, excuse me. Another issue is that the woodland areas are generally, the trees are generally the same age. So they all grew up at the same time. So that area generally lacks some species and age diversity. So priority items for this area would include removal of the hazardous trees along the trail. I'm estimated that to be about 50 trees in that area. Ongoing monitoring of tree health along the trail. After those, that tree removal, those hazardous trees are taken care of. And then future reforestation plantings in the areas where the trees were removed. Okay, for Trueland Trail, again, you'll notice a pattern. There are some areas of hazardous trees that I noted in my field visit. There are some large areas highlighted in yellow where there's some very heavy invasives growth on the property. And again, similar to Penn Oak Trail, this area generally lacks species and age diversity for trees and woodland areas. So priority items recommended for this area include the removal of those hazardous trees. That was estimated at 25 to 35 trees, so fewer than Penn Oak Trail. Ongoing monitoring of tree health after that removal, some vine removal. There was heavy vine growth noted on trees, particularly in the northern section along the trail. Mainly on dead and dying trees that were noted as hazardous to begin with. And then future reforestation plantings in those areas of removal. So Meadow Creek Foxfield Equestrian Trail, there are some hazardous trees noted. Not as dense as on other properties, but there were some noted that are close to adjoining properties. There's some ease, some encroachment into the easement from adjacent properties with fences and some landscaping. And the area generally lacks species and age diversity. Notice a pattern with that. Priority items for this area would include removal of hazardous trees along the trail. It's estimated about 10 trees. Ongoing monitoring of tree health after the tree removal. And then future selective invasives removal and reforestation. Centennial Trail, hazardous tree removal should be a priority for this area. There were a number of hazardous trees along that outside perimeter of the property that were noted. But because of the proximity to adjacent properties and because they were not in view of the trail, those were not evaluated as part of this study and they would need to be evaluated separately. So the understory is dominated by invasives and some climbing growth was noted, but it's not as prevalent as in other properties. And as with the Meadow Creek Foxfield Equestrian Trail, there is some encroachment onto the township property from adjacent properties with landscaping, expanding mowing of lawn areas and such. This area did have more species and age diversity than in other locations, so that's very good. Priority items for this area include removal of hazardous trees along the trail. That's estimated approximately 15 to 20 trees. So for a property of that size, that's not too bad. Ongoing monitoring of tree health after removal of those trees and vine removal. Okay, and Penn Ambler Park is the last site. So there were several ash trees that I noted at the time that I went to the site, but all those have since been removed by Public Works. Planting opportunities for this site are limited because the park landscaping is existing. You want open areas for your park for people to play in and for the amphitheater. So recommendations would be possible planting of an additional two to three shade trees behind the amphitheater lawn seating area. And then maybe some ornamental shrub plantings to the rear of the amphitheater. Okay. So those were the evaluations of the site. So what I was asked to do as well was, you know, how, how did the township determine priority rankings for tree removal? Going forward, how would, how would Public, Public Works look at that? And how would they evaluate trees and groupings of trees as something that they need to address? So I worked with township staff to put together an evaluation criteria that Public Works should look at those trees and determine the priority for removal. And that would be implemented through Tracer. And that would also be used to determine what Public Works could handle themselves. What were they, excuse me, what work they could do themselves? Whether equipment rental is needed- Whether equipment rental is needed and whether the work needs to be bid out. So so there are three categories for priority tree removals. And I wanted to note that due to the liability issues, we're really emphasizing the need to address the large number of hazardous trees. So the replanting of those areas is not emphasized as much in the report. Because the removal of those trees really take a significant amount of time. It can't all be done overnight. It's going to take a number of years to address that to make sure that the areas along those trails are safe. So priority one trees would be trees for removal. Those would be, include trees that were within striking distance of populated locations or structures. Trees that could impact utility or there's a verified complaint from a resident. And how that would be determined that the tree is priority one is that the tree is diseased, has significant decay or damage, or has other signs of potential failure. And then it would be, excuse me, determined whether township staff could remove, if a contractor would be needed, if equipment rental would be needed, or if the work needs to be, excuse me, referred to the appropriate utility company. Priority two trees would just be monitor. So these would be trees that are not located near populated locations or structures. And there are some indicators of structural issues, but they're not significant. So they would have a history of large limb or other failure or hanging branches that cannot be addressed with pruning. And then the third category would be trees that do not require action. And those would include tree reports from residents that have been evaluated and verified, but do not require action. Excuse me, verified to not require action. Or the tree is located on private property, in which case it would be referred to code enforcement. So as I mentioned, right now, the removals are priority over the plantings due to the large amount of cleanup needed. And the liability issues presented. It's a significant amount of work for Public Works and they can only do so much at a time.
I just wanted to come from it. I don't want to interrupt you, but from my calculation, it looks like you're recommending removal of about 115 trees as a high priority.
Okay, yes.
And why do you, you say that will take years just to remove those trees?
I can't. I can't speak to the, yes, yes, it will likely take a number of years.
Is that just a recommendation? Because it sounds to me like, because if they're high priority, because they're near residential areas or potentially utilities or near a trail where people could be walking, thus could follow them.
The priority rankings would be based on further evaluation by Public Works after that initial removal is done. Public Works could go in and say they're doing work in a certain area and they see a tree that they think could be an issue. They can go through a form on Tracer and check off those items. And then the township can determine what ranking that tree has, how it would need to be removed, if it needs to be removed.
Okay.
A number of the trees that are in your report have already been taken down, right?
Along Dagger Road Trail, I don't, I don't know if trees in other areas have been removed.
Is Dagger Road the only one where you don't have trees? You just say monitoring the high priority of it?
Yes.
But all the other ones?
Yes.
Okay.
We did recently remove some along Tin Turn and in that neighborhood. Not a significant amount, but there were some that needed to go right away.
Okay.
So we took them down.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt.
No, that's.
Sorry, I want to jump in with one thing. I think the other thing is that Val's looking at criteria to say these trees should come down and that they're higher priority than other things we're doing. But even within that, I think there's still more subtle priorities in there that this one needs to come down right now versus this one needs to come down in the next year. I think that it's not necessarily these all need to come down tomorrow as part of that, too.
Okay.
And the last element of the report, excuse me, not the last element, but rankings were also prepared for reforestation plantings. And those were more yes, no questions. And criteria include whether there are utility or other conflicts. How big is the planting area or are there smaller planting areas that are close to each other? Severity of invasive species infestation and what kind of effort that would take to address the level of site preparation required. And what kind of environmental benefit would be gained from planting those areas?
I'm assuming the scope of the project wasn't to estimate costs for all these parts?
No. No, there was, there was some estimation done.
So we did some very rough numbers and to take down all of the trees that were first priority was far more than is in the tree bank initially. If we just, if we bid it all out, it would not be in the cards to do it. Yes.
Is this something that, is this something there would be grants or something out there for or?
I mean, like, is it, and I know that you kind of mentioned this in your report, talking about like removal, equipment rental, that kind of thing. But is this within the scope of what Public Works could do or is this under, like, are we under assumption, assuming, I don't want to make assumptions, but are we assuming that this would be something that would need to be bid out?
I mean, I don't, Fred, do you want to? I think it's a mix of all the above. Some we can just take, some we need to rent equipment like we did last winter. A lot of them though are, need to be bid out because if we could have took them, taken them down, we would have already removed them.
And it's because of size and all of that other stuff?
Size as in trunk size, height and accessibility. Like, we don't have a crane, like when we drop a tree, it drops.
Okay.
So we don't have a crane to hold it and, you know, like between houses or anything.
And I think one of the benefits to this is that Val's work has already grouped these to a degree. Because when we bid it out, we want to bid, you know, 30 trees in one spot. Same if we're renting equipment, we want to get it all in one, so we're getting kind of the most bang for our buck. And with what Val gave us, she gives us a really good start with that. And then as we evaluate trees moving forward, A, I was really reassured that when Val went out, you know, Mitch Culp was with her for a lot of it. And they were right on par with each other. They kind of were on the same page for it. So now the trick was taking what they saw and turning it into something that we can give to basically everybody in Public Works. Turn it into a simple enough form that they can kind of use that quick evaluation to put it together. Then Fred can look at that on a map and say, all right, here's 30 or 50 trees in a group. And then we have something neat and tidy to put into a bid package if it's going out or to assign to his crews for a month if they send them out like they did on Dagger.
Okay. Appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt again. Yeah, that's, okay. The last element of the report was putting together some policy and procedure recommendations for both the tree removal and invasive species management and planting site maintenance. Policies and procedure recommendations for tree removal, where the tree parts are small enough to chip. We've recommended chipping those trees and spreading the chips within the surrounding wooded area. That will help with invasive control. Will also return nutrients to the soil as those chips decompose. Also reduces the amount of tree parts that would need to be hauled offsite. Stumps should be left in place to decompose again for environmental benefit. And some larger tree parts could be left to decompose as long as it's not creating large log piles. Recommendation protocol for invasive species management and reforest plantings and maintenance included. For invasive species recommended such as documenting the invasive species on the site, how to research plant species management, minimization of soil disturbance, how to control those plants, how to find out how to control those plants, disposal of the plants and site monitoring after removal. As far as planting and maintenance, there's recommendations included in the report regarding plant material sizes, watering, deer protection, mulching, mowing, site monitoring, ongoing annual maintenance and monitoring. And that is the end of the report. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I just appreciate all your work and efforts working with staff and our various committees on this. It's very detailed and.
Very comprehensive report and very sober.
It was, it was a pleasure to work with the township staff and happy to be a part of it.
Thank you so much. So.
I have a question before we go on. This, this really doesn't pertain to you, more to the township staff. But with all the, what I'll say is encroachment maybe of private landowners onto our public property. Is that going to be handled case by case or what are we, we've had to deal with that along other trails. Are we going to have the same approach for these trails?
Yes, we'll take a look at them and I made a note to make sure we follow up with that. So I, full disclosure, I want to finish the last wave. We're almost done. But then start taking a look at these and we'll have to make a determination between what's a landscaping encroachment that requires action versus, you know, it's figure out what's the best use of our time, what are the most serious issues? And then maybe trail by trail, work through what needs to be addressed.
Yeah. I have in mind things like bamboo planting and so forth that we don't want to.
Right, like someone's mowing a little bit further than they need to may not be the next thing we need to address rather, you know, there's bamboo that's taken over or more plantings that are kind of more claiming land, if you know what I mean, versus just maintaining it for us.
Yeah.
So yes, we will have to, we'll do that. And I think probably just try to keep it manageable, do it systematically bit by bit.
Thank you.
So I don't know, John, do you want to take over? Because that was the first, the presentation of the forestry evaluation. Now there's a strategic management plan, which was included and the development of it. So we kind of tasked, I guess, what was it last summer? We tasked with the development of a strategic plan to utilize the fund in an effective manner as it related to our tree fund, I guess. So the final draft of the plan is attached, was attached in the board packet. Is there anything else you want to say about it before we consider?
So no, really the strategic part was a prioritization aspect of it and how we're going to be grouping them together and doing one thing before the other and things like, that there's a lot of removal that probably needs to happen and cleanup before we even start planting anything. So that's really where the strategy comes into this. So that's really all kind of rolled into what Val was saying.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand. We're going to be asked to consider adoption of this plan without knowing how much it's going to cost?
Because it's just strategic in nature.
I get that, but there are some recommendations in there that are, which I agree, we have to deal with some of this stuff. But I think we're going forward with something that we have no idea what it's going to cost.
So approval of this plan is not a commitment to remove every single tree that may have been identified by Val. It's saying, it's adopting it as this is a general plan that we're going to be pursuing both for the management of the wooded areas, forest areas that the township owns. And what was motivating this was we have this tree bank. What's the best use for all of that? So it's not a commitment that on every single one of those properties, we have to remove every one of those trees. It's not obligating the board to do that. It is saying this is the plan we're going to, a general approach that we are going to follow for tree removals. So what it does, by approving this tonight, this just becomes one more, a big data point that staff has as we're preparing the 2026 budget. Board said yes. If you don't say yes, we just sit here and don't do anything with it. If you say yes, we use this then, you know, as Fred and others, Sandy, Mitch are looking at these things of like, all right, we looking at it with this criteria. These are our priorities. This is what staff can do. We have all of these other projects, but these trees are critical, these 15 trees or whatever. And that's what we include in your budget. I mean, it's how, that's how it would be used.
Okay, so we're addressing the finances of it in the budget process.
Correct. I think the goal is, is was really for us to just have a strategy as it related to utilizing the funds and ensuring that staff were kind of going through.
Is this similar to what we did with the park strategic plan? Like there wasn't an actual?
Right, we'll go back and be revisiting that again, other improvements.
Similar model. Yeah, okay, yep.
And, and the trail plan, we put that into effect without a dollar amount. But I think it's really important to have these strategic plans. We can't ignore the safety implications of the dead trees. And also I think part of our mission as a board is to make sure that we maintain public property as well as we can.
Any other questions from the board or comments?
Just one thing real quick. I mean, one advantage that we have, because we have the tree bank there, the tree fund, is as, I mean, we're always looking for grants. We get a lot of, staff gets a lot of notices of grants that come and there's matching funds that are sitting there. So we will definitely be keeping that in mind as we look at implementing this, too.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the strategic management plan for the township's forest management. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much. And thank you so much, Al, for coming and presenting and putting together.
Bear with us, Al.
Next up, we have, I think, consideration around parameters for our tree giveaway program, which is coming upon us very quickly. I think included in the board packet, I don't think, but included in the board packet is a memo that kind of outlines some of the questions or concerns or guidance that the EAC I think is looking for as it relates to how we would like staff to provide limitations or if we would not like staff to provide any limitations to HOAs receiving free trees for open space areas. Included in the board packet, I think, is an outline of what the tree giveaway looks like. It has been successful for three years. It's probably one of our most attended events, I think. It's an awesome event. Homeowners associations have come forward and have looked to see if they can acquire large quantities of trees through this event. I think the EAC is asking the board how we would like to consider that moving forward. I think it has happened in the past, but not sure how, but it seems like it might be just through individual, individuals signing up for trees and then donating it to their, to their HOA. I think there's a suggestion by our recreational director, Sandy Fike, to connect them to the Philadelphia Horticultural Society as well as identifying, I think, some of the plants that we would like to see in some open spaces. I, and so I'm open to the board discussion. I'm just going to give my thoughts immediately. I think any resident within the township should be entitled to a tree, the tree giveaway. If they choose not to plant it and to give it to their homeowners association, I don't see any concern with that. I think the homeowners association as an entity, getting the trees is a little bit more questionable as it relates to, I want to ensure that every individual within the township who wants a tree can get a tree. And I know that there's been waiting lists or at least cutoff, that some people who have really wanted a tree haven't been able to get trees. So that's really what my concern is. But I think any individual who gets a tree, I don't think we're monitoring and I wouldn't want us to monitor what you do with your tree after you get it. If you gave it to your homeowners association and planted it in a, you know, open space. I don't think that there's a problem with that, but I mean, that's just my vantage point. Open to hear what everyone else has to say because I'm intrigued.
I did have a question about this. Are they coming and asking for like one tree per unit in their HOA? And such to the fact that they would be precluding, you know, other residents from signing up because the HOA would just sign up for 150 trees?
I think the concern, as Sandy described it to me, is that they, there was a representative from an HOA at the EAC meeting, but I guess this has come up before too. Where an HOA, similar to the discussion we just had, is like, you know, we're taking down some trees or we just want to expand the wooded area and we want to plant 25 trees there. And the township's giving away free trees. And instead of organizing 25 homeowners to go collect the trees and donate it, they just like, can we skip the middle person? And can you just give us 25 trees? Which felt like that wasn't the. Which felt like that wasn't the purpose of the tree giveaway. It was more a homeowner comes and gets a tree and for the most part plants it on their yard, or maybe they're giving it to the HOA. And the one tree isn't too bad, but if you had a couple, if HOAs are like, hey, we can get them for free there. And you had two or three, it starts to become you're funding the HOA's free tree planting instead of the original intent.
But is there? So I, I was just going to ask, is there, are we now preventing people who belong to HOAs from getting trees? Or is the, is the question whether we'd want, we'd want to allow HOAs to sort of bulk order these trees?
So I think two things. One, would you allow HOAs to come in and bulk order a tree?
I'm inclined to say no. I agree with you.
And, and sort of as a way to also prevent that, to instead be reaching out to HOAs or even just responding to HOAs to come that, to say that the, you know, township, Sandy could work with them a little bit through the Pennsylvania Historical Society or the Tree Authority, where they've been getting the trees the last couple of years or other, you know, tree programs that are out there to help them either make sure they're coming up with a good plan so that they're not planting all the same trees or the same trees that everyone else is planting, that we get a good diversity of trees. And also maybe find them like through the Pennsylvania Historical Society, find a less expensive option for getting trees that the HOA would then pay for, not the township. So it would still be helping them, you know, save some money and, and hopefully have access to some trees without the tree giveaway becoming the HOA tree contribution program. So it even feeling, I don't think there's really so much a concern that the HOAs are going to totally take it over, but that it just feels like it might be good to have some guardrails so that there's, it doesn't fall over too much in that direction.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess I would wonder what the goal of the program is. Is the goal of the program reforestation of the town, not reforestation, but planting in the township?
That's for you to answer. I think that's what, yes, I, I think Sandy would agree.
I didn't know if we had a stated goal when we created the treaty.
I don't think, I think that's some of the, and that's where Sandy is, I think, feeling like, and Tessie, you can, I guess this has been discussed, at least among some of the EAC members, that I think that maybe is the question to be answered. You know, if the board is like whoever, as long as people are willing to plant trees, they get them. As long as they're willing to plant trees in Lower Gwinnett, they get them.
That was my understanding of what the purpose of the program was. And I don't think the homeowners associations are doing it because they're unclear of what trees to buy. I think they want them for free. So they don't have to increase dues. And I guess, I, I think we're all sort of on the same page. I don't personally, if the goal is plant trees in the township, I don't care if it's the homeowners association or an individual member of a homeowners association that does it. The goal is accomplished. I do think that in HOA, so my subdivision has 51 home. And if the HOA, if every homeowner asks for 50, a tree each, and then the homeowners association asks for 50 trees, because that's how many people are in the 51 trees, that would be unfair. I, I agree with that. But I don't, whether the individual homeowners ask for the tree and give it to the homeowners association or the, there's a mechanism for the homeowners association to ask itself. I mean, all we're doing is just finding a way around it. I mean, or, or all, all the homeowner associations are doing is finding a way around it. I don't think the homeowners association should be able to double dip. That means their members get them and they get them. And maybe HOA should have to go to the back of the line. And if there's any extra, we'll take homeowners associations on a first come, first served basis, or they have a separate lottery. Cause I know we can't accommodate all the requests, right? But, but I, I think sort of saying HOAs can't participate is just, it's like a fiction because then they'll just get their individual members to do it. I mean, it hasn't happened to my knowledge in my association, but I don't need a tree. But I, but I hold on, I don't need a tree. And if the HOA came to me and said, Mike, sign up for the lottery and get a tree and donate it. I'd be like, okay.
You would go down and get it and put it in your car?
No, somebody else would do it.
Oh, but see, you gotta go pick up your tree.
You gotta go get your tree.
So it isn't, it, it makes it a lot easier for an HOA to sort of bulk order and, and then a homeowner who's not in a subdivision. They wouldn't be able maybe to sign up because it is, my understanding is it's a pretty competitive process. Like it's,
You gotta get it on the deck.
You gotta get in there. It's like registering your kid for preschool. So it's like, you gotta go when it's live and request your tree. And so I, if we did say HOAs can bulk order, which I'm not like, I'm not opposed to. I just maybe then that would mean we have to increase the budget for the giveaway and sort of treat them separately.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure. Has that actually happened that an HOA said, we want 25 trees?
This is the first, I think it just happened. Yeah.
And again, so I don't think that was so much of a problem as, you know, should there be a cap on how many?
Yeah. I, I think that we should, so I, I basically don't care what entity is getting the tree because the objective of the program is to increase the canopy over Lower Gwinnett. But I think it has to be limited to individuals. Now, if that individual wants to donate their tree to the HOA, I'm okay with that. But we can't, it's too difficult to set up guardrails around everything. As long as it's one individual with one tree. In other words, also, if you have 10 kids, maybe it's not right that each of your 10 kids gets a tree, you know? So if the, if the homeowners association wants to work with Sandy or, or somebody on staff to understand how best to diversify and plant their trees, I'm okay with that. But I think each tree should go to one homeowner and not the HOA necessarily.
I think that I, I agree with you Tessie for the most part, but I, I think that I was kind of struck by the idea that maybe if we set up a separate thing for the HOAs. Cause I know that there were, had been years, and this might've been when I first came to this board, or maybe before, that we didn't give all the trees away and then we took some and we replanted them. Was that recent? Was that the first year?
Although I think there, there's usually a few trees left for people to register and don't come and pick them up. But I, I know that there's also like stragglers who know that happens and will come get some of them. But I think there's usually a few trees that are left.
Is there a limit, like one tree per?
Household.
Or address?
It's supposed to be, but it's, I don't know if we have the software to like weed that out. It's sort of like a Google form. We do now. Okay. There you go.
But maybe this is something, I mean, it's, it's a need. I, I don't think that it is unnecessarily a bad thing. Cause replantings and, and increasing the tree canopy is something that we want.
And the HOA being interested and wanting trees, I think is a good thing. Maybe, maybe for this year, we can't.
Maybe not this year, but we think about how we can include them in a separate thing or a after leftover type of thing.
Yeah, they could, they could go to the end of the line.
Or if they're, they want to advise the residents of the tree giveaway.
But.
And so sign up, just like every other resident, right?
Mike, are you the only one maybe who has an HOA here? I'm not familiar with the rules of an HOA. So why can't they just go out and buy their own darn trees?
They can, but why can't individual homeowners? It's the same, it's, it's the same issue. I mean, there's nothing to preclude them from buying their own trees. There's a budget every year. I, I assume like for most people, they have a budget for landscaping. And it's the same question, right? Why can't you go out and buy your own tree if you're an individual? They, they have to, you know, like our homeowners association, we have a bunch of open space. I guess every year it's budgeted. I don't frankly recall. I haven't been on the HOA in a while since I've had this wonderful job. But yeah, it's the same, it's the same issue that you would have in your individual household, Tessie. It's the exact same.
I mean, I think the benefit of us coordinating with the HOA is we can ensure that they're native trees. We can ensure the type of trees that they're going to be. And we can ensure that they're the kind of trees that we would want to see replanted. I think, I'm just thinking of all the positives. Obviously, obviously they're, they're looking to get free trees, just like most residents would be. But we as a township, as a community, want our tree canopy to increase. And so if we have any influence in ensuring that it increases in a way that we would think would be beneficial to the community, we can partake in that, I think.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. I, I think we do, the, the second aspect of the tree giveaway is to increase native trees as opposed to invasives or less desirable plantings. But I'm still, I'm still hung up on one tree per family. If that family wants to donate their tree to their next door neighbor or to the HOA or to the filling station down the street, that's okay with me. But I, I think HOAs are a business entity and that should be separate from homeowner, private residence. So I would not be opposed to having a parallel program for that type of entity.
I'll just say, I don't think the HOAs are business entities. They're, they're nonprofits.
Okay, a nonprofit business entity.
And I don't think they're businesses, but would, would this be applicable to businesses? So could a business in the township, Hannums, for example, if he say, you know what? I need a tree. One of my trees died. Can he ask for a tree?
Right now, I think it's just homo, it's just residents, not businesses. Now, again, some, we're not inspecting where the tree is getting planted. So if, you know, you came in and did it, you, you get a tree and you want to give it to Bob Hannum and he plants it there, fine.
Is, is not, is Hannum's not, I mean, you're saying residential.
Homeowners. A, so an apartment, a renter here who gets a tree could get a tree, but so a resident, not a business. Someone who lives here, not runs a business, owns a business here is the idea of it. Whether in the end a tree gets planted on a commercial property is, as Tessie said, is, you know, no one's expecting that now. But that, that just feels different than ship. And I mean, and I forget money here, but ship comes in saying, I want 50 of your trees. Right? Like that, that definitely feels wrong. And I, that's not what's going to happen.
They have to get in line once as opposed to 50 people, you know, waiting in line.
Well, I mean, I don't, again, I, I agree, it shouldn't be businesses, but ship would be one res, they're a resident of the township, they get one tree.
They are, yeah, but they're not a res.
No, 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 I understand. I mean, I mean, they're business.
They have a lot of buildings.
And right now it just isn't intended.
I, I, my suggestion would be keep it how we've been doing it, which is, you know, a resident signs up. We're not like, we can't, we're checking it as best we can, but this is the process that's set up. And then, but I do think it is a good idea to encourage HOAs to, to have access and replanting. And whether that's Sandy working with them and connecting them with the right vendors or if there's some other parallel program or a different signup that we decide we want to do, maybe we can look into that for next year.
As you peruse the budget.
There might not be that much, there enough time to really get that.
For this year.
Put together for this year.
Yeah. Jimmy, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, pretty much. I think everyone's in the same kind of mindset. So, you know, I don't think, I think we're kind of overcomplicating it right now.
So we're good with, we're good with how we're doing it right now. And then.
We'll see what we can figure out.
I think we should plan for the future with recommendations as it relates to how we can incorporate the HOAs or if, if there is money is budgeted or a process that we want to establish so that HOAs can move forward. We're good? Okay. Next up, is our bond council. We, we had an RFP out for our bond council. I think the individual who came back and was recommended by our staff is Obermeyer, Redman, Maxwell and Hippel. Included in the board packet is a brief memo and their, and their proposal. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Obermeyer, Redman, Maxwell and Hippel LP as our bond council. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is the consideration to advertise for a traffic signal mast arm replacement, which we budgeted for, for Bethland Pike and Penland Pike. Included in a board packet was a memo outlining the advertisement. I haven't gotten to it yet. Are there any questions from the board? None? Are there any questions from?
You said we budgeted already.
We did budget it, yes. And it's just one 20 foot signal mast arm on the southwestern corner and then one 20 foot signal mast arm on the northwestern corner of Penland Pike, Bethland Pike. Any additional questions from the board? Outlined in the memos, the scope of the project, the timeframe, timeframe and the expected timeframe to receive it and force replacement. Any questions from the public? Seeing now, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement for the bid for the Bethland Pike, Penland Pike Traffic Mast Arm Replacement. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Next up is a resolution related to a restated plan for the 401A non-uniform money purchase retirement plan. This is a memo that's outlining what we need to do as it relates to the adoption agreements to keep the transition moving, to be fully executed. All of that would need to be done by resolution. We don't, we're not changing anything as it relates to the employees retirement benefits. The purpose of this switch is to, for the plan administrator to have lower fees and to perform net performance as it relates to the employment, the employees retirement investment. So the first one is for the 401A retirement plan. This is just adopting what we already authorized previously by resolution. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to approve resolution 202514, restating the 401A retirement plan. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the same, similar type of resolution. Restated in the 457B retirement plan included in the board packet is again, the resolution, the memo outlining it. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 202515, restating the 457B retirement plan. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Included in our board packet is our financial report for July 2025. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I want to thank Melinda for a very thorough in report. We appreciate it always. And I would blame Mimi for putting you at the end of the agenda when it's almost 10 o'clock. Really not our fault.
It's really not our fault. We're doing our best here.
Well, we thank you for that report. We appreciate it tremendously. Next up is the invoice report for August 26, 2025. Has everybody got a chance to review? Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice report for August 26, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The traffic engineer, engineer report for August 2025 is included in the board packet. Any questions for our engineer? Seeing none, like to thank, thank our engineer. I'm assuming, wait a minute. Our regular engineer doesn't have a report? Oh.
Very well excused.
You're excused.
Included in the board packet is our liaison reports from our committees and, and our supervisor liaisons. Next is the, oh, I skipped something. I'm sorry. The, the minutes from our July 22nd, 2025 board supervisor meeting were included in the board pack. Are there any questions, concerns, comments, additions or deletions for those minutes? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 22nd, 2025 minutes, our board supervisor meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. We already went over our supervisor liaison reports. We thank you so much. Staff updates. Nobody. Okay. Supervisor comments. Tessie, it's you.
Um, uh, no comments. Thank, just thanking the staff as always. Thank you.
Janine?
Thanks.
Okay. Jimmy? All right. Bersky?
Oh, congratulations to Taylor and Travis.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm kidding. Don't put that in the minutes.
To thank all of our staff for all the tremendous work that they've done. Again, planning and being purposeful and the planning for our future has been a goal of this board. And we have done so successfully with now a strategic plan as it relates to reforestry. So again, thank you. We are very appreciative of all the work that you have done, but it is 10 PM. So I can't be very specific. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.